I call to order this meeting of the Denali Borough Plan Commission on November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five at six oh two P M. We will start with a roll call, please.
Mark Minkie. Susan Braun.
Here.
Jan Johnston.
Here.
Steve Jones.
Here.
Baxter Mercer.
Here.
James Ward.
Here.
There's a farm.
All right. Entertain any motions for absent members?
Move to excuse the absent member.
So moved and is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Any objection? Call that past unanimous. Moving to the public comments. You don't have anyone in here in the room. I do see Barbara Breeze online. Interested in making a public comment today?
I'll send my comment in by message or email. Or text it. Not right now.
Sure. Well, hey, thank you.
Thank you.
That'll take us to approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Moved, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Any objections to the agenda today? Okay. Unanimous approved of the agenda. Takes us to minutes of the previous meeting, September seventeenth.
Move to approve the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all right. Any discussion on the minutes of the previous meeting? Any opposed to approving the previous meeting meetings? Okay, it's approved. That brings us to communication and appearance request showing none today. And we're over to reports, starting with the Borough Planner.
Amazing to me, September seventeenth seemed like yesterday. Now that we're doing every other month, it'd be like it goes even faster. I don't have a lot to report. In fact, Chris usually does a nice job of kind of summarizing. So just some things to point out for myself would be continuing to work on the commercial land use project, if you will, making some progress with that. And then we've got a lot of addressing things going on. One of my items that we're going to be discussing is really entails me just doing a lot of you know, catch up. Now that I'm really kind of gotten my heels up in the ground since March, you know, since I transitioned to Martha, we've been feel like I've kind of got a good grasp on where everything's at and just making some changes and tweaks and then other than that, that's kept me pretty busy.
Comments, questions? I noticed a Christmas tree through the door downstairs.
Of course, I've been busy getting ready for the holidays. Thankfully, he's like-minded and we've kind of accidentally started putting things out a little early. Got a little excited.
Not too early, no, never too early.
I'd have him out all year long, right? I love your trees. Sorry.
Oh, yeah.
I love your trees.
We'll talk more about that.
Can I actually ask a question? Can you refresh my memory of the timeline for the commercial use permitting process? I remember there's some back and forth needed through the Planning Commission and the Assembly that was going to spill out over the next month.
We ended up doing some changes to the fee schedule, which will be put with the fee schedule approval, review and approval in January. We did clean up some code at the last assembly meeting. So I'm really just checking off those timeline boxes and working on the application still and then the user report, quarterly user report. Chris and I kind of drafted another letter to the commercial operators just to kind of give introduce it again and get them familiar with it so that we can potentially have maybe a meeting or collective of all the operators. And then we kind of, we were thinking, what, January, February is right now, we're calling it spring, just to give us a little bit of leeway. I still would like to get it going sooner than later. If, if all of our ducks in a row line up, so, so yeah, that's kind of a wrap.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, I saw at the last assembly meeting, they approved those changes and and yeah, the conversation is next summer is going to be, our body is going to be involved in quite a bit of these applications that we haven't seen in past years.
Right, right, yeah. As far as timelines go, I guess the next planning commission meeting, do we know offhand when that would?
January.
January. So it might be your March meeting when you, you see a suite of of commercial use permit applications, if, if we can stick to our timeline and
That would be ideal.
Yeah.
That's good timing, too.
And also if we, if we needed to throw in an extra April meeting to get any that we missed or last minute ones.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have any winter conditional use. You know, in this, in this world of mostly, I think we're looking at trails and kind of backcountry stuff and I don't think any of that, we have any businesses looking for winter applications.
Potentially, that application really does encompass winter and summer. Year-long season, we kind of really are just trying to capture all of them in that annual application, if you will, permit. So maybe we'll capture some of those or get a good idea of who actually is operating in there, too. I'm not sure if we, you know, who, when the amount of activities going on in the shoulder season.
So I live about thirty miles up the Yenner with Joe Wona, he came riding by with his bicycle. My kids were making snow angels and we were having a cup of coffee. Here comes two dog teams on a commercial tour going out into the wilderness from Wasilla. So that's something to be aware of.
For sure, for sure. And I think that's our next big homework, John, would be to collect all those commercial operators' names and contacts and names and addresses and start pinpointing them.
And the irony of it is they got mad at us for being there.
Of course.
Because it ruined the experience for their clients.
Okay.
I think running into you in the middle of the woods, that'd be
cup of coffee in hand. How you doing, everybody? Welcome to paradise. Good. I think, thank you. That'll take us to the Community Development Director Report and I see Stephanie is online. She, there she is.
Yes, I am. Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm, I'm joining from my house this evening. Amber, I'm going to go ahead and oh, can you enable me to share my screen, please? That's possible. Okay, let me bring it up. So Planning Commission, I've been working on some products, planning products and processes. So I wanted to share basically what I've been working on so that you can be prepared, so it's not a surprise to you at all. And so I wanted to give you an update on a housing study and, and plan, like a planning product that we're working on and then our comprehensive economic development strategy. And one I'm not going to talk about, but just keep in the back of your head is we may have a transportation plan coming if we do get grant funding for that and we'll likely know, I would, I would say probably in December or January about that. Maybe January or February, since it's almost December. So I just want to check, is everything showing up on the screen there?
Yeah, looks good here.
Okay, so I'm going to start off, I'm going to share some slides with you, the, this Minnesota Housing Partnership. We are looking at doing a technical assistance arrangement with them that was similar to what happened with the community and outdoor recreation plan with the National Park Service. They did make a site visit last week, held a workshop and then made a presentation to the Assembly. So I wanted to bring you all up to speed and you probably noticed some emails in your inboxes from them and kind of just give you a little bit more background on the project and some revised thoughts about how we might proceed. So this started out as a housing needs assessment project. I'll share a little bit about the Minnesota Housing Partnership first. They have three buckets that they focus on, community development, research and public policy. In the arena of rural capacity building, they get a lot of their money from HUD, from the Rural Capacity Building Program. And we're specifically looking at technical assistance in the community development realm with them. And some of the things that they do is they partner with communities to build thriving and resilient places to live. So again, focusing, they're the Minnesota Housing Partnership specifically on housing. And I think the great thing is that these resources are generally free. And so we'll look at leveraging some of the resources that we're already committing to housing, including staff time and some of the contracts that we paid for to move forward with the subdivisions and that can be used as, you know, leverage. And otherwise, they, they provide all this great technical assistance. Steve was at the workshop. I think that they really showed their strength with that and also in their presentation to the, the Assembly last, last week. And then I will mention too that they do have an expertise helping Native Nations. So I think that they do have some key insights that could help with housing in the Cantwell area, working with the, the Native Village of Cantwell and the, the Regional Housing Authority that serves the Native Village of Cantwell. So some of the services that they provide is they create and implement homegrown housing and community development solutions. And I would emphasize that homegrown, you know, they bring expertise, but they aren't necessarily going to impose solutions from the outside. There, it's considered, they, they want us to have solutions that are going to work for our community. They help their partners secure funding through grants and programs. They build partnerships and collaborations. And again, engage that local voices and work. And then that part of the capacity building is also to provide our team with the, the skills that we need to continue on the work after the action plan and our technical assistance with them is completed. So I wanted to share a slide that they shared with the Assembly about what this technical assistance would look like. And so we're talking about conducting a housing needs assessment, stakeholder engagement that they help facilitate and with the goal of creating a housing action plan. And then providing tools for us to strategically plan and grow the housing stock and again, support us internally. And then if we want guidance on regulatory frameworks like policy and zoning, they can provide that as well as identifying financial resources and potential funding sources. Something that we added to this list that hasn't been updated is they offered us a little bit more help and implementation service, too. So if we do the housing needs assessment, we do an action plan and the action plan has actionable steps. Kind of helping walk us through those actionable steps with the goal of by the end of our engagement with them, say, over two to three years, that we have more housing units on the ground, that we're seeing that, that direct impact. So it's not necessarily just a plan that we're partnering now. We're looking at expanding that technical assistance to include their help with implementation, which could be grant writing or helping us with internal capacity. Or, you know, identifying, you know, again, specific projects that we can work on to get more housing units on the ground in the next couple of years. So the idea that I wanted to show you here is the housing needs assessment timeline. This isn't the whole project timeline, since we're figuring our engagement might span two to three years, but to give you an idea of what, how we think this will progress is there was a listening and discovery process. It was like community engagement light with the, the project kickoff that happened. And then we have more data validation and gathering in winter and summer. So this winter and then into summer twenty twenty-six, which will include another site visit, likely in spring or early summer. And then the action planning, strategy refinement in fall twenty twenty-six. And then final report and implementation launch in fall twenty twenty-six. So kind of a rapid timeline here, but I like to see that, you know, we're getting community engagement, we're coming up with a plan and we're moving forward with implementation by this time next year. So I'm, I'm super excited about that. I guess I'll open it up for if there's any questions about this before I move on to talking about the comprehensive economic development strategy.
Questions here? No questions here?
Um.
Oh, I see. Barbara Breeze, I see you have your, you're off mute. Do you have a question for Stephanie?
Yes, I can't find where to submit a comment.
Amber, could you assist with that?
It's on the website where it says submit public comment.
Okay, oh, I don't see it on the Zoom workplace site, so I'll keep looking.
Yeah, there is.
It's on the Denali Borough website, not, not on Zoom.
Oh, I don't know. Okay, probably won't see it then.
If you're, you're sending an email, you can send it to publiccomment@denaliborough.com.
Great, thank you. I have a vocal cord issue, so it's hard for me to talk online right now. So I'll do that. Thank you so much.
Yep, publiccomment@denaliborough.com.
Okay, thank you.
And yeah, Stephanie, no questions in the room here on the, on, on this presentation.
Okay, great. Well, I will go ahead and I'm advance here. And I think I have inadvertently drawn on the screen. I don't know how I've done that and I don't know how to erase it. So let's just live with this pretty blue mark right now. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about the SEDs and so SED stands for Comprehens- Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. And we received a grant from the Economic Development Administration. It's a short-term planning grant to complete this strategy. And we signed that award paperwork this fall and are launching into this. And so I wanted to give you an idea of what this planning product is going to be, what the process is going to look like and what our timeline is for it. So in a nutshell, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, it's a locally driven economic development planning process and it, it creates spaces for us to look at our strengths and our weaknesses and brings together partners to talk about jobs, diversify the economy and spur economic growth. And so this is a plan that's good for five years. We'll go through a list of requirements of what's required for the Economic Development Administration. It gets submitted after it's approved at our local government level to the Economic Development Administration for their approval. And it involves the creation of a working committee, a SEDs committee, a strategy committee to write the, the, the plan and to help facilitate that public engagement. And it basically satisfies the requirement or opens up more funding from the Economic Development Administration for economic development grants. So I'm, I'm super excited.
It involves the creation of a working committee, a SEDs committee, a strategy committee to write the, the
Does anyone else hear the playback? Okay, there we go. And I should clarify that I will be the, the staff person who's the point for the project, but we will be having a contractor who will lead this development. It's similar to what we did with the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. So what can you expect? So what's in each section? So a quick overview is that there'll be a summary background section, a SWOT analysis, that's a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threat analysis. A strategic action plan that will be created and then an evaluation framework so that we'll look to see are we actually achieving what's in the action plan? And then built into all of this is a component of economic resilience. So I think that maybe the, the, the parallel for our community is something similar to this was done during the COVID nineteen pandemic to look at our resilience of our economy when we have something happen to the tourism sector. And how do we keep functioning in a situation like that? So this will help us plan for resiliency, I think, in a, in a broader sense. So what will this look like? So we're planning for the project to start and bring the contractor on board in February of next year, so February twenty twenty-six. Planning to have the draft Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy ready in twenty twenty, in October twenty twenty-six, it'll go out for a month of public comment. And then the Planning Commission, we have it slated for review January twenty twenty-seven and then review by the Assembly in February twenty twenty-seven. And this is maybe if you think about a similar process to the Community and Outdoor Recreation Plan is there's, you know, a committee associated with this, a working committee associated with bringing the plan to, to fruition. We have the contractor that's going to help guide the, the process and do most of the data analysis, technical work, compilation of the end product. So we have a nice, pretty product like the Community Outdoor Recreation Plan and it'll be a similar timeline. So after that public comment, we'll move to you all, the Planning Commission for review and then be forwarded to the Assembly. So that's a, a quick update that's a little bit in-depth, but I wanted to let you all know is the Planning Commission, these really exciting planning projects that we're working on. And that's it. I'm happy to take questions if there are any questions.
That is exciting. That's going to be a big, big couple of projects. Any questions here for Stephanie? All right, seeing no questions here. Thank you for the report and yeah. I like your background is what the, the second thought in my head. I don't really, I'm pretty sure it's just an AI screen, but like it, anyway. That'll take us to a report from the mayor.
Okay, thank you. I will go ahead and verbally highlight a few things that I have on my written report, which you, I'm sorry, you may not have in front of you, but it's on the website attached to the Assembly packet. One, on the finance front, I just wanted to provide an update. We've got kind of tax receipts consolidated for the third, well, what would be the first quarter of our fiscal year, the second half of the summer. And it turns out that overnight accommodations tax revenue, which is seventy-five, no, ninety percent of our total tax revenue is overnight accommodations. So that, that portion is up ten percent from the previous year, which is really good. It exceeds our budgeted, our, our budget by one hundred and ninety-two thousand, just for that quarter. Which it, so you know, overall very positive news. Alcohol and marijuana, I won't go into the details there, but it's relatively flat. Severance tax is it's up actually substantially at fifteen percent, but that is point three percent of our total tax receipts. So fair correction of what we do. Next, I wanted to highlight, I had in the last month, a meeting with Alaska Geographic's Executive Director, Andy Hall, who was up checking on their project down in McKinley Village, Alaska Geographic Purchase, the former two-two-nine Parks Restaurant. And he specifically wanted to come in and share an update on what they're doing down there. I know many of my neighbors have probably noticed and maybe others who have driven by Alaska Geographic's developing the property. They've had employee housing there the last few years as, since they've owned it. And they are in the process of building a multimillion dollar, twelve unit employee housing unit. So it's just overall good news. We're, we're going to talk housing. You know, we, we talk, this body talks housing when it comes to subdivision planning. I just wanted to highlight what they're doing. They've received a, a number of different grants to, as part of that total capital stack for developing this. And we're really, you know, happy to hear of their they are planning to, it will be winter-ready. They don't have plans to have housing, you know, staff in there over the winter, but it is going to be kind of winterized, so to speak. The nice thing is Alaska Geographic is one of the key partners with Denali National Park. And so if Alaska Geographic doesn't fill all twelve units, the park kind of has first dibs on those, those vacant units. So it's a good, good overall for our company. Wanted to highlight, I saw Assembly Member Alexander jumped on and thanks to him, he invited Golden Valley Electric Association to present at the last week's assembly meeting. I just wanted to highlight, there have been power outages for those who hadn't heard down in McKinley Village, on the north end of Cantwell, related to beetle killed trees falling on the lines. GBA is well aware of it. They shared some stats on the, the number at the first half of the three quarters of the year and then the, the last few months and it's startling how the, you know, the, they're coming down basically with these wind events. And so Golden Valley is, is taking kind of immediate steps to mitigate that and they're seeking private property permission, property owner permission to take down trees that could fall on the line off private property. So they're working with folks. We wanted to get, you know, we want to get the word out. If, if people are in the Jack River Nation and haven't communicated with GBA, we encourage them to reach out. On that same front, they're continuing to work. They put in a grant application to mitigate the, the threat of beetle killed trees falling on the lines in partnership with forestry in the borough. Last year, they did not, they weren't successful in that grant application, but they're going to try again this year. And they're also working with the park specifically to try to create a tie line between the park entrance and McKinley Village, which would add some redundancy to the canyon, redundancy to McKinley Village. Heely's basically, in short, Heely could feed McKinley Village and Cantwell. The opposite, as I understand it, is not quite true. Cantwell, McKinley Village, that feed couldn't necessarily feed all of State Park and, and Heely, but it adds some good heat redundancy. So they're still working on that. And yeah, and just, yeah, thanks to Trina and, and thanks to Stephanie for highlighting the other good things that are going on in the office. Staying busy.
Could you describe the twelve housing units? Like, is it one big building, just a block or?
Yeah, in fact, we do have a diagram or a, maybe a rough sketch. I'd be happy to share. Alaska Geographic would be happy to share it. It is one big building. It's on the same part of the project. The local contractor put in a new septic that will serve the new twelve units, plus the former restaurant, plus there's one other cabin on the lot there. It's going to be basically an insulated crawl space with two stories above it. I'm thinking of, trying to think of something similar, but all of the units will open out onto kind of a shared long deck and it's going to be set right on the bluff overlooking the river. It's going to be, I think, a really good sweet place to, for a seasonal employee to live.
And it's apartments, like?
Yeah, I think they're kind of efficiencies. The, the idea is, I think they do have their own restroom. But the two-two-nine will continue to be kind of a shared kitchen, shared space. And so it is very much like they're still using the facility, the restaurant, former restaurant space. It's kind of a meeting space.
Our laws.
Yeah. But they're, they're really, you know, really interested in being a good neighbor and I'm really happy to hear this, this building is coming here, so.
Yeah.
So what about the numbers for leading something?
Yeah, should we move right into the rough order of magnitude? Any other questions before we get to that? Say none, I'm excited.
You want me to share that, Chris?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks. So yeah, we, we reached out to Design Alaska to receive a rough order of magnitude cost estimate for the roads. You all have looked at the subdivision design. This is based, it was based on concept B, which I'll jog your memory. There was basically lots of small lots. That was concept A, lots of large lots. That was concept C. And then concept B was kind of a happy medium. So maybe the average lot size would be maybe two and a half acres or so. So based on concept B, also based on the road standards that you, you know, this committee has looked at, this commission has looked at for quite a while. And the bottom line numbers, I'll call your attention to the two, so three-point coming around here, but you have it in front of you. Phase one, which was the northern loop, and Amber's got it on the screen. So that's phase one, the estimate was about three point eight million. Phase two, we could jump ahead to that. Then we can maybe come back for detail. We could jump ahead to that. Then we can maybe come back for detail. Phase two was the bottom segment of road. And the total estimate there was two point five million. For a total cost estimate of six point four, almost six point five million dollars. So there's a little, maybe a little sticker shock, but I may be curious to hear. Thoughts. We we did ask them to provide some level of detail with this estimate. And so you'll notice some of the item detailing is. We use DOT model, you know, DOT estimations as kind of the model to help us kind of understand what's in that total number. We have noticed there's a slight discrepancy between the two phases. We've brought that back to Design Alaska. They're going to give us a new number. You know. And which will bring the two phases into alignment when it comes to total cost per linear foot of road. So right now, if somebody were to do the math, which I won't ask anybody to do right here, it's it's different. We're going to, the two should be the same. Again, in round numbers, phase one, as written there, that's four point eight million dollars per mile. And it's a. Fraction of a mile there, maybe three quarters of a mile. Phase two right now is three point seven million per mile. Our understanding, the total, which I don't have, is correct, but the two, they should be basically unaligned. Again, just for, you know, clarification, these were a standard that they were using for estimations was the category two, three roads. From the road standards that, you know, this this bodies look at extensively. Yeah, if I could jump right in and provide maybe a few other, we just did some, did some quick. Calculations that I I won't share because it's not very pretty. But the total cost, at a total cost of six point four million. There are thirty nine lots in in total concept, which meets, which equals. Fifty five thousand dollars would be the total cost per acre if we built phase one and two all at once. That's. Average cost per lot. And again, we can, I can share the the background for this, but that would be a hundred and thirty, a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. Is the average cost per lot.
What was that again?
A hundred and sixty five thousand, which is the average cost per lot. So again, those two fifty five thousand dollars per acre. You know, we could, let's think about that. Does it make sense in the context of what the going rate is in our individual neighborhoods? Maybe, maybe not. Total cost per lot, a hundred and sixty five thousand. So that's, those are some of the kind of big picture takeaways that I think we can take from the rough order of magnitude estimate. We can also use it to inform capital improvement planning. The budget's coming up. It'll help inform our transfers into our our land management capital funds. So these long term planning efforts. Like we want to be. Keeping kind of the bottom line. Yeah, very curious to hear kind of first impressions.
A lot of money. Yeah, obviously, it costs this much to put roads down in the best place we have. How we can do the rest. We still got, we still got the hour lines too.
Correct.
And this is just a build, so we're not going to be, we won't even break even. By chance.
And, you know, to the. Thinking housing, you know, there's intangibles when if the borough were to develop housing. When it comes to economic development, providing places for community members to live. But yeah, when it comes to like trying to recoup costs.
Yeah, this isn't going to be a profit making exercise for the borough.
And and one other caveat, I will say, because there's, and this doesn't really come out in the rough order of magnitude in discussions with. Design Alaska. And we need, there needs, we plan to have more follow up with DOT. I think there's, you know, we want to make sure our standards are. We're looking, we're operating off of the right sheet of music, so to speak. This is based on if, say, DOT were to take this out to bid. Our kind of general conditions when the borough goes to solicit a project, it's going to be a fraction of what DOT might require. If we don't use any federal dollars, if they're all local dollars. Those are factors that might help bring the cost down. So it's. I I'm not saying it's not realistic estimate, but I think there's things that might help, might play to the borough.
I would do it differently. Now, we have a cost, average cost per lot. And we have a subdivision that's in place. We and. We find a developer that will take it on at that cost per lot. And develop a certain type of house. We need. Affordable housing for first time home homeowners. That's required that that be built on those lots. And at at the given price of fifty five K an acre. See what we come up with as like as far as wells go. First water, do a community water system and put in a dispenser like. Water Wagon has at Gina Pump Road in Fairbanks. And you put your debit card in and you get so many gallons. And you pay five cents a gallon or whatever it is. That would be income for the borough. At least a portion of it, you know, not much, but it's income that's not going out. And so we find out if a developer is willing to. Take this project on and build affordable housing, which is the what kind of housing we need. The most stuff, the quickest type of thing. And this area suits itself the best for doing that. And if we put the pump house on that big green area on the second phase. That's right between the two phases. It's off of the main road, so vandalism would be less visible or. Harder, it'd be harder to be vandalized with and without being. So it kind of. Said more than the public guy. No, that's kind of. Different way of thinking about this kind of development in the borough, doing it all themselves. So that's just one scenario. So I'll leave it at that because there are others.
Thanks. Yeah. My my value engineering glasses on here. Been using the word value engineer a lot this week for unrelated reasons and. You know, we we. We preferred these maps that had a lot of green space and trails. And I think it's worth saying out loud that we have several lots worth of. Space that's being set aside as, you know, reading public for future use. So, you know, dividing this by, you know, forty five lots instead of thirty nine, that doesn't. Really change, doesn't really change the numbers that much, but it does. You know, everything we're doing have a cost associated with it. You know, same thing. We have these, you know, medium sized lots. So if if finances were not reasonable, now that we have some real numbers to look at it, I. I mean, I could imagine looking at the number of lots. In option A, would be time traveling. I think that had. You know, almost a third more lots. So it's another way where you could. You know, make the make the per lot cost a little bit more feasible.
And honestly, I'm looking at option B versus option A from our meeting pack of a couple of months ago and I. I don't think the amount of green space changes at all. It's really just lot size. It's just carving a lot smaller. So it wouldn't be a sacrifice. Green space or community space. Not that we want to revisit something we already. Discussed.
So five acres is a very large lot for affordable housing.
Yeah. Yeah, it's. I think if you're, if you're asking folks. I mean, this is just us building the road and surveying. You know, the the next step is that somebody purchases the lot and, you know, builds a house on it. And that's comfortably three hundred thousand dollars. Does that sound like a low estimate to anybody? You could, you could maybe get a real small place for closer to a hundred maybe, but. I don't think even that, I think you're. I don't know. It's hard, it's hard to say. You could build all kinds of dry cabins and things, but.
People want to be able to come in and buy a place. They don't want to have to take the time and the effort and create the turmoil of building because. So why not put it out to a developer who will. Or contractor who can build it. And then sell the the house with the lot. We know we have a fifty dollar an acre. Price, the worker. You know, how many lots, the size of the lots are kind of irrelevant. You know, we're working with that price. So. And, you know, a good developer will put in the roads and putting in cheaper ones. Yeah, certainly. And, you know, as far as the girl goes. The girl could, you know. Buy into taking. A certain amount of money upfront and then as each lot sells. Receive the rest of it, you know, that kind of thing to kind of sweeten it, the deal for the contractor developer.
Take a little uncertainty out of it, money upfront kind of. Sooner anyway.
Well, I mean, this, this is a. For a building contractor, this would be a two to three year long project. To build both of these phases in affordable housing. Or low, you know, first, first owner housing. We could even have some design parameters that they work with. We could supply some. Sample plans, the kind of thing that would be interested in and they'd have to submit for approval. I mean, it would allow us to do this without waiting for years to acquire enough money to do it. We could shorten the timeframe. That it's going to take for this to become available. As opposed to, you know, this isn't, we don't even own this yet. It might be a year or two before we get actual title to the land. So, you know, we have to take that into consideration. So, you know, how many years do we want to keep pushing this cart down the road? You know, there are ways to make it happen, but.
So we discussed anything about the building standards. About. Trailer houses. Over wide.
Personally, I'm against it.
Yeah, just because that's, one of the guys asked me here, Betty's a suburb, I know, but he was hoping to buy a motorhome. Out for land up here, this everyone, he'd be allowed to buy a lot. Purchase motorhome one year. And use it, or is he going to be required to build a bigger house? He said he spent so much lifetime so far, then he had trailer houses, then he also, he likes it. And he said he's the, he liked place here to headquarter in the summer. Where he can't afford to, you know, build a house or. I don't remember us talking about that.
You know, trailers are one thing, but pre manufactured places, but. Put two pieces together, simple, cheap. Less expensive.
Can be pretty well built too, well insulated, you know, good foundations.
And that's, that kind of use lends itself to the community well type idea. So that you don't have to have a community water system where each individual have to come up with fifty thousand dollars for water.
I think. I mean, I'm hearing a sort of a. Call for information that we're all going to need to work on going forward. I know the municipal league is in February. They might have some folks we could talk to. We just. Heard a couple of slides about, you know, Stephanie's work and a couple of plans where they're looking for. I'm, I'm sure there's resources out there that, you know, explain how to get started on a. Bidding this out for a contractor to build a fifteen houses, twenty houses, twenty lots, you know, three acres. Yeah, we could probably put together a path forward in that direction. And then whether we actually go down that way is, you know. Hate to keep. Well, what if we had more information? What if we had another order of magnitude for that path forward? But. It does, I mean, with these numbers, we're already looking at a pretty big money down. And it would be. Interesting to put another number to, you know, how far are we from? A two bedroom, one bath family home multiplied by fifteen in one of these loops, you know? I I think the timing is really good with our picking off our partnership with the Minnesota Housing Partnership folks. I, at first, I thought I understood it to be basically just an assessment, but it's really. That that's just phase one, the action plan, like they don't really want to stop there. They want to guide, help. Walk with the community to understand and quantify the need, come up with actionable ideas that the. Community is bought into and then go implement it. And they're like, their mission is really get more units in the community. And. So I think the timing is going to be really good where they can help us, you know, kind of understand where we're at with this particular subdivision and. You know, I I think something we talked about internally is there's kind of, there's four lots that are right up against Ligny Road. Those don't need, you know, they just need a driveway. So there's, there's some low hanging fruit that. Some of those. The how do we? The how do we develop the large thing? Those questions don't need to get answered to to start with those other units. We just probably need to start with what level of land use protections. The do these, should these lots have a favorable return? And they're going to help guide us through these conversations. Yeah, yeah, I don't. I remember former Commissioner Haugen, when we were drawing these all up front of ours, right? No, he just said, what if we just put a lot of lots along Ligny Road and then maybe a smaller loop through the middle? I mean. Basically, yeah, what if we threw away this map that we've worked on for three years and started over? But it's a lot easier to redraw a map than it is to, you know, pay the money. That's. We're thinking about. I know more driveways on Ligny. It's, it it changes a little bit of the road conditions, you know? We had, we had comments from folks who were worried that they'd be skiing over driveways a little too often for their preference and, you know, rebalance that, but. I think. I think that is, one, one of the central questions we're going to have to ask is, you know, are we prioritizing? Housing as quickly as possible targeted towards. Smaller units move in ready for, you know, new community members, seniors, young folks coming in. Or are we targeting lots available for folks who live here right now to purchase and and build as they prefer? Or maybe a combination, or maybe this subdivision is targeted in one direction and. Something on a bluff looking over the Alaska range is maybe a different decision.
I mean, that's the way I feel about it.
I would agree with you, yeah.
Two potential subdivisions that are having much higher value per acre than this one does. But are harder to develop. This one's the easiest.
And the need is greatest too.
Suits the need. But I do believe that that few of the lots are too big.
Yeah, I know, right on KJ Field, there was some conversation about that being. Really the only place where you're directly bordering existing. Property owners. And so larger lots right there, matching the. Housing that's basically across the airfield might be, might be a good idea, but. There's a few other four or five acre lots in here that. Yeah, it's five acres, two and a half acres and, yeah. Maybe.
Properties was able to submit a note.
Hey, yeah, let's read Barb's notes here. Given the volume of aggregate.
Did you get that?
Yeah. Thank you, Barb.
You're welcome. It's a, it seems. It's pretty important regarding. It's pretty important regarding groundwater, uh, noise, dust. But especially the groundwater, especially so close to Dry Creek Springs. Um, the Lake Night Springs, it's, it's pretty important and. It's, it's not common to take sand and gravel from a braided river. Instream mining is kind of banned in. Most everywhere else, so it, it seems like it's really important when you're factoring costs. To look at a supplier that sources from upland sources, which means not. In a river and especially um, a river that runs into a non-rivers river. And Dry Creek has many active springs, it's a paleo river. Um, very active underground springs and you see him come up at Lignite and um, pretty important. And we've been pumping water uh, from this river and mining sand and gravel. In a precious braided river stream, so thanks, just wanted to throw that in and. I know it's, it's part of the consideration that needs to be going on right now, it takes a fluvial. Uh, it takes a lot of uh, research on this and finding, there are many upland sources, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, I'm, I'm reading two questions into that, I'm reading, or notes, I should say. One is, you know, the, the specific uh, mine next to Dry Creek, is that, you know, is that a source? That's also um, kind of the second note is that we have these uh, broken down rationale for the cost, the, the basis for these estimates. And, yeah.
Yeah, and, and one, one thing I would say is, again, we, they, Design Alaska used the road standards that we have. It does make some assumptions that um, you know, this wasn't a, this very rough. In other words, there, i- if we, it's flat, there could be nice sand and gravel right underneath the tundra. And um, which may mean that this amounts of sub base that are estimated are off potentially. Um, the amounts could be lower, they could be higher, um, but also they didn't, they did not con- contact local. Um, construction companies, they use estimation. I think they're using the bigger markets to make their estimations and then adding a factor for the remoteness or the, the rural nature of. Where the project is located, so.
Um, sites, sites are very tied to the proximity, the distance and it, if you use. Uh, and a, a company, a supplier that doesn't have to pay for um, sorting. You know, you just take it from the river, if it's easier for them. Because it's all, a lot of sand and gravel, of course, is already sorted by the river process. And so that makes it cheaper for them, but the cost is borne on. The community that depends on clean water, the springs, the future. Um, our future kids that would like to be able to drink from the water, it compacts, our, our. The groundwater, the ground and the cost is born too, the noise of the mining. Um, the impact on our wells, um, the, the silica dust from this mining. That is born on the adjacent subdivision, we're paying for it because. Our home values are severely diminished from this um, kind of extraction. And we pay for it, so you may get cheaper gravel and sand. But we're paying for it and it causes flooding way upstream too. Because it destroys the, the base of the river, which causes more um. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, the destruction of this, the channels which end up going lateral. And so that knocks down trees and um, the, the basic, that river wants to go. It's got a, a route that it wants to go. And if you, nothing you can do can change that, but meanwhile. The mining is causing more landslides upstream. Uh, and, and of course flooding and you can talk to fluvial engineers about that and. Um, but it's very impactful and the noise, the, the, the diesel fumes are very impactful. Um, on the, the stony subdivision, so. We're paying for all this stuff and the concrete and the waste that goes in the river. So, next time you go over the highway bridge at Dry Creek. Look down the river and look up the river and see if it looks like it did ten years ago. So, it's a gradual process, but it's, it's really a big impact and we need to find, well. Over at um, across from Otto Lake or the, the pit that's down there, that's an upland source. Uh, we have to find them, so thank you, I'll say goodnight, good work.
Thank you, yeah, there are, there are some upland sources, we, we explored. Uh, we, we had a site visit to the gravel pit that the borough owns off of Stampede. Um, I don't know that that is postured to produce this kind of material, this, this amount anywhere. Um, but conceivably, we could imagine a borough owned gravel source that, you know, just at cost. You know, remove profit, well then, if you remove, I don't know.
I'm, I moved a lot of gravel. And I'd much rather remove it from upland site than the river. And I've removed a lot from Dry Creek. And I've seen Dry Creek below the bridge sink, exposing the pylons that hold up the bridge. And that would not have happened if we hadn't moved gravel out of there. So there's an expense that.
I agree, I, I walked down there and seen what's going on and it's wrecking Dry Creek.
And quite honestly, the material from out the Stampede Road is much higher quality than Dry Creek.
The um, is it, is it DOT, there's somebody that has a gravel pit just on the south side of the Bengi Creek Bridge. Trying to think, they were, they were blasting there, they were doing a lot of equipment um, in and out of there. Were they just producing sand and gravel for the road maintenance or?
Yeah, they were building roads there. But where our, where our. It, you know, dump, sub, you know, station is down there, that was all. Taken out for road building and across the river they're still using, but. It's good material. Go onto those bluffs on the other side of the road, it's too much sand, it's not a good material.
But to your point, Mr. Mayor, yeah, it's a, it is a big unknown, it's a rough order of magnitude, the costs of any of these pits, it might be more or less than. Guesstimated here. I wanted to ask, just changing the subject a little bit. Six point four million dollars for the whole thing, roads done, uh, I, can we? What, what's the borough's budget look like, how, how thick of a chunk of the borough's money is that?
I would say we should all regroup in about the January or February timeframe at the assembly meeting and. Um, you know, it's a good, great question, offhand, I don't think that. But I think it's, it's part of the capital improvement planning process, it's part of our annual budget process. Um, because we're forward funded, we need to be saving um, for large projects, capital projects, and we do that through transfers from. Um, you know, out of what's available in the budget, we transferred into their, our long term savings accounts, the capital. Land Management Capital Fund, Salvage Equipment Reserve Fund, um, as, as examples, so, could the borough? Uh, you know, another, I guess, another point I'll make is that we have this, this thing called the budgetary reserve. That our founders implemented that is, we budget for one point, this year it's about one point two million dollars that we. Don't ever plan to spend, it's available for budgetary purposes, but we typically zero it out as part of the budget amendment, so. That's, that's in the budget this year, we could go, if we had a one point two million dollar expense that was compelling enough. It's available, so, um, I'd say the borough is financially, we're in a great position, but this is, this is gonna take. Um, it's a big, a capital stack, I, it, how I'm thinking about it is the borough's, you know, borough dollars should be a portion of the total. Um, of, in a project this size. But we should come to the, let's talk about it at the.
The borough should make money off of this, not spend money.
Wait, land management is an enterprise for the borough, um, I think I can say with. Good certainty, it hasn't ever broken even. Yeah, we try.
But thi- this is a new format. You, we have no history with this, so that's why we need not to think viable alternatives.
Yeah, just speaking for myself, I, I, I can lean into the idea that the borough might lose money on this. And, and choose to do it anyway, I think we could, we'd be subsidizing our housing problem and uh. Yeah, I, I don't think that we just light money on fire, I don't think we send workers out there to dig with hand tools instead of equipment, you know, we're not just spending money for the sake of it, but. I'm okay with not turning a profit or even necessarily breaking even, I think if it's a well thought out plan to. You know, make a place for, solve our housing problem, give folks a place to live, that might be something that we spend money on, and that I could be okay with.
I, I'm against using that reserve. Been against that since the borough started.
You gotta be against it in all but the most exceptional circumstances and it's this one.
This, I, I don't think it is, I think there's ways of doing this where we don't have to. Lose money, we don't have to make money, so we don't have to lose money.
And when we get into all of the grants that are out there and all the, you know, permutations of this, where we adjust things a little bit and. Save a little bit of money, I mean. We've got some more things to do, I think.
So it's just impossible to do things like we used to do. I mean, we've got these road standards, but we have said. I guess we said we won't want to live up to those, but man, that's a lot of money. Good grief. We've, you know, Stampede or the Pendini subdivision, I know it didn't cost that.
Well, okay, but the state put the roads in, or some of them.
Uh, we got money from the state. But it wasn't near that much.
And you didn't build into the standard.
No, but we've been driving on them for, you know, thirty years.
I know, I put in your driveway.
Yeah.
So this, yeah, this is very much kind of for informational purposes, obviously no actions needed, but we wanted to, we got it, we wanted to share it and. Um, there will be lots more to come and.
Yeah, so this was the, the deliverable from. I mean, there, right now, Lake Night subdivision path forward is, is waiting for final title on the land, right, so. We don't have any timeline unknown on that, do we, is it a year out, is it fifty years out?
We're waiting for them to basically release patent, okay, and that's about a year process.
And we can do everything up to selling the land before we hit the ban, but we can't actually sell the land and. Probably wouldn't be a good idea to put shovels in the ground and actually build roads, if we weren't close enough to it. But if we're a year out, then uh, talk to the assembly about putting aside. Six point four million dollars or so, maybe, maybe half that for phase one, maybe half of that amount, assuming there'd be some. Etching grants or something, start putting some placeholders in the budget.
Do you think, would there be any way to, like, this is broken out into two, two phases, kind of breaking the subdivision path. Would there be any way to take smaller bites at this at a time and maybe? If, if it's a portion of one of the roads that eventually is gonna serve X number of lots, but to start with only serves. You know, a fewer number of lots therefore needs to be built to, you know, one of the less intensive standards. For us to still get lots out there, to still get the starts of these roads built, still do some of this and just um. Take a lot of the heft out of the price tag, like, not, not, not take a huge bite, like, to start with, but kind of nibble at it to start, I don't know. If that makes sense, or if, you know, constructing a road to a lower, less intensive standard and then upgrading it later is more hassle. Than it's worth and you're really on to just build it to the, to the full standard when you start, but. I'm just wondering if maybe breaking it into smaller pieces than like a whole half at a time might be a way for the borough to like step into this. Address some of the need without expending like huge chunks of capital, all, all at once. And, and so far, we don't know the real need, right? That's the Minnesota people are gonna help with that, or do we know enough to say?
My, my belief in Minnesota Housing Partnership will also help with this, but like, I think we can all agree, we need more. And we might talk about what we need more of, and I think it varies by community and what Keely needs is different than McKinley Village, it's different than Cantwell and Anderson. Um, so, they're gonna help us quantify the need by type. But if we can all agree that we need more and this is just one of many solutions to getting, you know, to helping us towards that goal. That, you know, we're, we're all on the right track, um, in that this is, it's just one pathway the borough can take.
So, on this phase one, if we built one of these roads. We'd be able to sell with the existing roads that are lignite that's there, we'd be able to sell uh. Twelve, which, fifteen of the lots, all but two would be. Sold.
Right, and it's like half the road length.
And it's half, half the amount of road.
Yeah. So I'm wondering if there's different, different ways to. Har- parcel it out to. Especially as we, you know, I think we've said this a number of times, like, we don't have experience with this yet, this is kind of our first. Our first go at this, so, you know. I think how, how we phase it and how we choose to take those initial steps into it, um. Yeah, we, we, we could think about that.
Yeah, just, you know, back of the napkin math here, phase one consists of two roads. If we remove that southern road from this conversation and just. But uh, but that's about half the length of the road, and so you reduce the cost by half. But you reduce the number of lots by.
Three.
One, two for phase one, three, yeah, three, you're right, cause, yeah.
No, but, you know, then taking that five acre lot and making it into the two, two and a half acre lots.
I think we would just be not, not selling that.
Not, but you got a three point nine acre lot up there, adjacent to a.
The trapside area.
You know, that could be reconfigured a little bit.
And, you know, those lots could be in our plats or a potential future development if we wanted to. Add one, two, three, four, five, maybe, six or seven additional lots for the cost of the road.
Well, if, if you use fifty five thousand an acre for these fifteen lots and add that up. You've built your roads.
So we discussed any of this with uh, Golden Valley, possibly our lines?
Design Alaska reached out to Golden Valley and MTA, they're, um, the way I understand it, I think they kind of told us similar things. When it comes to like new residential, um, this is kind of like the last thing on their list to get to. Estimating concepts.
Um this is kind of like the last thing on their list to get to estimating concepts, you know, so. They didn't give us, they didn't give Design Alaska a number, but they're prepared, you know, if they, if, you know, they might move quicker.
So with this idea of changing roads here, some of the price there might go. You talk to Golden Valley, you said, usually, let's say, roads are here, we should get it probably cheaper done. Also, I've seen in Golden Valley, some power lines, it doesn't make any difference. You might not cut some of that off too, but. Which what they what they would put down here to reach everybody.
I don't know that they've spent much of any time on it yet.
So we ran into that roadblock on subdivision fairbanks, so we just put various power lines in ourselves. Got them like approved, they were decoded, and uh just forgot about above ground poles, which increased increased the view.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Does that one cost them?
No, it actually ended up costing about the same, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow, over the long term too, do you know, like maintenance?
Yeah, there's there's because there's it was not in an earthquake. Uh fault area. You know, it was not subject to uh breaking because of that kind of thing. And it's buried line, so if fire goes through.
Yeah.
Yeah, no trees to worry about, there are some transformers boxes here and there.
There were, yeah.
Yeah, but that's it.
So I'm writing down some uh next steps for us, we're not taking any action on on this topic of conversation, but. We uh we had a long conversation about hiring a contractor who would build multiple houses and several lots and the roads, we could. Try to find some somewhere, someone. Uh we're looking at a lot of uh grants and matching funds and. Other sources of revenue to match ours, grants. And I have just, we're spending a lot of time talking about. You know, if we adjust the road here and the lot line there and the driveways over there, you know, just minor reshapes to this. Which is kind of just fun stuff for us to do as we're going about other things for the next couple of months, I think the one thing that we would. Really wanna take action on is sharing these numbers with the assembly and and getting their perspective on uh. Whether they want to start putting money in the big bank.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other uh paths forward, things we need to work on over the near future?
I'm still like thinking your idea of doing a phase, I'm just looking at, how could we even maybe do it in thirds? You know, cuz there's basically, you know, this loop and then here, what if we just did this, this first one and. Maybe just do those in places and phases so that it's not like the. Expense. And even thinking about this many lots being. Like constructing all these roads and then selling all these lots, that's a lot of activity and that's. Period all at once, I mean, that's that's a lot for those those folks that already have homes there. Um that's a lot to ask of them too, to to have all of that stirred up at one time. And you're talking a year or two.
Yeah.
Right?
Although, I feel like yet we don't have a firm handle on the actual demand, like. Do we know, is it gonna go with hotcakes, like hotcakes and.
Right, yeah.
Right. All at once, they're like, is offering a third of it at a time, maybe appropriate.
Realistic concepts. Um one thing I wanted to, I don't know, ask and throw throw out there, when you were talking about getting a developer to come in and. Develop this, are we assuming that all of these lots would be used for like single family structures? Or is the possibility of like duplexes? Townhomes on some of the larger lots, so like an apartment complex that a developer might, you know, no individual's gonna do that, but like a developer might do that. Possibility as well, and would that be maybe of more commercial interest to a developer and maybe. Maybe they'd be more interested in helping out some of this, maybe not biting off the whole thing.
So so what I've heard the need is in this community is first time homeowner affordable housing. Not low income, but first time homeowner affordable. And if you did something like what you talked about, you know, I would limit it to something like a duplex. With the owner being required to be one of the tenants, one of the people living there, they could rent the other half. But they couldn't rent it for short term, it would have to be long term rental, that we could make that kind of restriction on. And that would further supplement the type of housing that would be available.
Right, yeah, and and like if there is, if there are. Single family housing being in need, but also like seasonal housing, if that's a need, that's that's identified as well, if we, if some of that were mixed in here. Potentially some types of that housing might be more or less attractive for a developer. I don't really know, but if we were interested and if we were open to mixed housing in there, that might be a way to help. I don't know, get some of that capital taken care of.
But we have to place some limits on.
Of course.
Yeah.
We we.
You know, a two acre lot with a duplex on it, to me is. By the time you put a septic system on that lot and with the community well, is pretty fully developed.
Yeah, of course, I'm not I'm not saying just, you know, like a row house with a whole subdivision, but just. Different types of housing might attract different types of developers, different types of homeowners or renters. Might provide for different needs, might help us, you know, tackle tackle these numbers, these big costs. Which I think that that housing authority or the housing. That we're Minnesota housing that we're working with, they they did talk about that as well, I think they will be able to answer some of those questions or help us. Um because one thing that was brought up at the workshop was, like you said, first time home buyer or um maybe not low income, but those. Families that are two working families, working two lower income jobs that. Just are in that three hundred thousand dollar salary range, so something a little smaller, something a little bit more maintainable. These easily financially maintainable, um so there's, like you said, there's and there's, it sounds like an answer to that. To adjust and provide for.
I think um, you know, we had a conversation about the uh Alaska Geographic. And I wonder if there's other organizations like that, uh does GVA or does Usupala or does the school want? Uh to, they need a piece of land to put it on, but maybe they wanna build a duplex or fourplex or. Some, yeah, seasonal housing maybe.
The borough still pays for that.
Yeah, well, we would be. How do you say subsidizing that by building the roads and then, you know, it's, we wanna make sure we're all on board with it in the final condition, but uh. Just talking about the options, I could imagine exploring that. I do tend to prefer making a lot of entry level, small family homes, uh you know, just think that. I I agree with you, I think that's more of the need, but uh but I don't think that we're uh foreclosed from. Other, especially this is, we're looking at thirty nine lots, we could, we could imagine like four of them, you know, intended for something more dense. We could imagine a corner in the, this is the southwest. Where they just, you know, have a little bit more traffic, uh more dense lots, the rest of it might be closer to what we're imagining.
So there's two five acre lots and one in each of these things, you could do a multi. Personally, a multi-family place on those two lots, if you wanted to go there. I mean, there's room to do that.
That's not uncommon, I mean, we have that already, I think. Considering Keely itself. I've gotten to know the community, you know, there's, Usupala has duplex housing and then there's those smaller apartment fourplex, if you will, I mean, that's. Maintainable and it seems to fit in with our community and it's, it's certainly needs some of those as well, so. But I guess I'm saying it's doable, it's it's realistic.
Yeah.
It's uncommon.
We we set the boundaries, we get to make the final call on what would be in the, what would be in the deed restrictions and. For now, it's all open. It's it's been a lot of fun. I saw, I saw this attached to the uh agenda, I got really excited. Might be cold outside, but.
Hey, I'll jump in um real quick and say I've been taking notes. Um with the discussion, lots of great questions and I, like Chris said, I'll echo that I think the Min- Minnesota Housing Partnership. Um can help guide us and and let us know what's been done before, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel and then um also. Present us with a suite of options, you know, that that fits our community um from from what we know and then again gather more data. And and to end on a bright note, I think um, you know, they're really excited about their engagement with us, I think we have a lot going for us in terms of. Um wins and strengths, um it's great to have this much land that we can talk about, we're not talking about buying land, you know. Uh anywhere, so uh I think it's a a great strength and a a strong economy with employers who really wanna make a difference. We have a member of GVA on our core working group, so I'll definitely ask about getting some cost estimates for electrical lines overhead and underground. And if we could prioritize that because I know that they're in a housing crunch, so um wanted to let you know I'm listening, I'm taking notes and um. This will go into the discussion with our engagement with MHP.
Okay, that seems to be a natural stopping point on this, any any last thoughts before we move over to? Okay, that will take us to Platts and conditional uses, showing none to consider, unfinished business. None to consider, and new business, resolution twenty five dash. I would uh entertain motion on introducing the resolution. Suppose we'd have to move to approve it.
Did you move, or I will, whichever. Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this resolution.
Have to introduce it first.
Oh, sorry.
It's uh for an ordinance, right, you'd need to introduce it now, or you'd still move to approve.
Ordnances have to be introduced in the first meeting and then then following me.
So we have a motion to approve resolution twenty five oh seven, we have a second and seconded discussion. Maybe we can start with uh your report.
And it's great that you've been already been able to kind of get the packet ready, but uh this one is a little bit larger than most, I think, probably since. All of the street naming has been done, this, like I said, since I've started, um Forrest has been an amazing uh partner, if you will. Kind of getting me up to speed and we've done a lot of site visits, if you will, around the um the borough. Uh we've cleaned up street sign, missing street sign, replacing some things, uh getting more of an inventory of things that still need to be installed. So that being said, um. With that cleanup, that I guess that basically brought me to this resolution, I really wanted to get some things. Fixed, cleaned up, some of them that came about, as you go through each one of them, there was this cliff road that wants to. That the owners wanna rename it for Homestead, it was it was a a street sign naming change that got missed during the initial. Project and process, um we've got a couple other folks that with the addressing that have applied for ad physical addresses, say, you know, they have. Multiple properties on and their driveway in their areas, that means they're eligible to name their driveway, um so got super complain. Um again, if you want me to go through each one of them. Um you know, spruce tops, spruce spruce tops, uh spruce top subdivision was Jeff Forsys, which we just approved his subdivision. Time for him to name his road so that now he's selling all of his parcels, so that was good timing for that. Um again, as I work with our um GIS. And and not being coordinator, contractor and coordinator, uh we've gone through and we're able to um. Physically address some folks that normally are kind of off beaten path and it's, we've come up with a kind of a system where we can. Uh locate how they actually come into their property and name the trail. And it'll be easier to find for EMS and now they have an actual physical address and so, and I think some of those are gonna keep coming up. Especially as we continue to to address some remote folks, um and some issues that come up recently. Uh the post office wants all the HC boxes to have physical addresses assigned to them now that they know that we're the addressing authority. Um that's part of their federal law, um and so I've got. A good handful of those that will be assigning addresses to as well, so it just kind of given us a nice flexibility to be able to sign addresses. Um the last one is, it it keeps coming up and I'd like to fix it now, just since I've got this grocery list. Let's just fix it, um it's come up many times where no one's ever called industrial road industrial road, it's always been called the Tippel. Um we've had, I've had many conversations with staff and residences and and. It just, it to me, it's it fits and again, when Forrest and I did kind of a site visit around. Um it just looking at it and looking at the map, that's why I put that little bit of a map in there. Um this makes sense, that area is called the Tippel here, we come through. I would like to just make it all one road, one name, and then later on, I'm also gonna address this reflection road situation because that's technically not a road. And we've had people trying to come up through it. Hopefully will now be renamed Tippel and try to go through reflection and that's not even a road, it's, and there's actually a street sign right there. And so people have tried to drive down the trail. Instead, it's not really a road, there's a street sign, right, right where the industrial and Tippel. It says reflection, so probably work on having that removed and we can leave reflection because it's planted. But it at at least addresses the issue that it's not, this section of it really isn't constructed in that driveway, I'd rather not have people trying to go through it. So that's just one small area that I would like to address and clean up. And like I said, since I already have the grocery list going, I just decided to. Throw it out there.
Great.
Hope that makes sense. It seemed like a lot when I started writing the resolution for it, but felt productive and. I'm I'm worthy since we have this planning commission.
I I'm looking at the Clear Sky Trail. There's a, there is of course a Clear Sky Lodge, and this is not co-located.
No.
So I'm wondering if.
That conversation has come about with a lot of the residents. It started with one resident in particular that that applied for a physical address, and then the more we looked at it and. Once you get to the top, when you start panning out, there's more residents that live out in that area that would also like to to have their physical addresses assigned. And that's what they call that trail, and we didn't want to extend that Kobe. Part of it, everyone knows that Kobe Road stops right where it stops, and then everyone calls that the Clear Sky Trail, so. That's why.
Of course, of the uh super covered places. Oh, it's it's on the screen, I wonder if we can scroll on the screen down to. A nice sunset. And then industrial, yeah, it might not be in. Well, I mean, we could. Pull it up on Google.
Yeah, in fact, um. Amber, you might be able, you might be able to pull it up, even up now like the wrong map, but it looks like. Yes.
They have Clear Sky Trail. We don't wanna name that Kobe, I know it's an extension of Kobe Road. Because that's just not the naming.
There's there's this one that the GIS, I know Director and I created, uh because these are other other. Parcels and pieces that residents have.
Yeah.
So there's there's a few more.
Yeah, I think I'm, you know, I'm not a emergency response or dispatcher or background like that of. You know, one of our original motivations for addressing was to make sure that there's no ambiguity when there's an emergency and where the person is, and I. I know that we have. You know, the Clear Sky. And I, I know that we have, you know, the Clear Sky, Clear Sky Lodge. I think there's a Clear Sky subdivision too, right, for in that area. And then knowing that there's, it's hard, because they've already been using the name of that trail, you know, for a couple decades now. So it's not, I mean, it would continue to be confusing, you know, if we had a different name. But uh,
Well, and I think some of, some of this as well, as we've, as we've come together with emergency services, that now that we have the mapping system, and and I'm hoping that we'll continue to work with the fire department and emergency responders, especially some of the new ones that come in every year. I'd like to kind of get with them at the beginning of the season, show them our mapping system. They'll like, they'll be able to pull up that, the name of that road, and they'll have the pins of where those physical address numbers are. So I think it'll be a lot easier to find, um, regardless of some of the naming.
Then they just know to have equipment that'll get there.
Right. That's going to keep coming up as well. Like I said, there's, to give us, to quantify it, there's about sixty HC boxes that I'm going to be addressing in the next few months, um, because like I said, uh, the post office is requiring it. I've just kind of now been delving with some of those residents, and this type of situation is going to keep happening. And I had one the other day that said there really is, it's like six miles off the highway. And they've had emergency responders only be able to come with helicopter. It's kind of interesting to see. How those responses.
Then they have to have a way to contact it.
Right.
You're six miles off the road, you may not have a telephone access.
There's a couple places on the highway, we have no radio access period.
Oh, really?
If you're flying up out of Rock Creek, I mean, you could go Valleys, Micro there.
Yeah.
Certainly by the time you pass the Zinsky's old, you know, back there until you get up to two sixty-seven, two sixty-eight, that whole area in there is dead.
What about like Star? I don't know a lot about Starlink, but I keep hearing more and more.
Yeah, that is an option today, but it's a recent option.
Right, that's true.
And I bought three miles of comm wire and run from my house to the railroad, and then went and asked me if I could hook up to their telephone system. They said yes. Fortunately.
That's the same thing.
I had a set in there, so it would, you know, ready to hook up, yeah.
It's kind of what some guys ferry gave, you know, all the way out past where Kathy and now that's had something around the wire all the way out there for the trees. For nobody, or, or without, they work, I think it's still there.
Yeah, I I used it for three years before they called me and said, you know, we should probably start charging.
Good neighbors.
I do think it's a, I think we're at a point where we've gotten, I don't want to say majority, and I can't really give you a percentage, but we do have a large number of our residents that now have physical addresses that are on our map that we can locate them easier. Um, and as we continue to work with, you know, Fairbanks Dispatch and and even that information, I do feel like we're at a point where it's going to be an education process with our emergency responders as well to to look up that information quickly. And and I've I've talked to Baxter about it a little bit, I've talked to Megan about it a little bit, Forrest. You know, we're in, and also in the new era of our age group of emergency responders and volunteers. And they, that's, that's how this generation works. It's mapping, it's the phone, it's, you know, that. So I want them to be familiar with it when they get here. And they'll be able to kind of say, oh, I know it, I've seen that, I've been able to look that up, I know where that's at. And kind of put the two and two together, hopefully.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm thinking about the two and three years ago, when there were fires out on that Kobe Trail system, and the announcements came out to evacuate the Anderson subdivision.
Right.
And the entire city of Anderson threw everything they had, and then the campers started driving out, and somebody flagged them and said, no, not that, city of Anderson subdivision.
It's it's a coincidentally, you bring that one up, because I had a, one of the HC box residences that that applied for a physical address two days ago, that she's got that on her agenda. She wants to to figure out how they can rename that subdivision, because it's concerning every year when they have a fire that it keeps getting referenced as that, and everyone wants to assume it's Anderson, it's not, so.
Oh, there's Starlink a little bit.
Yeah.
There is a plan now. Uh, it would be usable for people like, who's talking about, it's only fifty bucks a month. That's cheaper than MTA.
Yeah.
And it's very reliable. Uh, you can use the mini antenna.
Yeah.
One of my tenants dropped their MTA because they just have Starlink back there.
Yeah, it works great around here. My my in-laws have one in Nana, and I've had a few contractors working at Clear that just put one on the roof of their job trailer.
Right. I've seen it on people's cars.
I have one on my boat, and I'm thinking of putting one on the house and getting rid of MTA.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it works so well.
Yeah.
And Zoe in Fairbanks has got one on her house, fifty bucks a month. Well, she's an out, out of town, and it's not really great service, but it's she's within eighteen miles of the university. So where she works, and so there's houses all around.
I say it actually, that's the one condition that keeps it from working well, is that there's too dense of an area that are all using it. Then it divides the resolution by the number of people in that area that.
We should talk to forestry about that, because they were still running out of communications. Last year up in the hills up there, the same place, we're down on the highway, can't talk to here, can't talk to Fairbanks, and they kept talking to us up on the ridge. So the Starlink tonight, really, yeah.
You can put one on your.
Ambulance, put one there in the ambulance.
Yeah, it is, I mean, they even have a mouth specially for that.
Mobile response trailer, if they got a portable uh, EOC or something.
Yeah, we know where that construction was, right, running up to Fairbanks. I I believe um, that the, where they have the stop at the one at one end, and they had another one at the other end, that's how they were talking to each other, because there was a lot of times they couldn't even rate each other. Right, because a lot of times they had the little umbrella over the box, because otherwise they wouldn't be able to talk to each other either, to let they know the pilot car was going back and forth. So that was kind of interesting to listen to.
So, I mean, I don't mean to be stuck on this point, but if if they issue an evacuation of your trail, are folks who live next to the Bears' Lodge going to get used? I don't know. Interestingly, evacuation zones were on the local emergency planning committee meeting, it's not last night, yeah, last night. And this, it it is in a different zone, so Kobe is its own zone, which is just the Kobe section of Kobe Road right off the Parks Highway. What subdivision is this? Okay, um, so it's, yeah, bottom line is they're in two different zones. And so it would be like, when an evacuation goes out, you get the evacuation name, zone name, plus all of the sub, the streets that are within that zone.
There's usually a map attached.
There will be a map, yeah. It's going to be like, like, you know, very easy for the borough to say, oh, this, this is what fire management says, okay. I thi- I think it's in a different ambulance for fire service area too, right? Because Tri Valley goes up to the Rex Bridge.
We go up to two seventy-four.
Okay.
Which is mile and a half south.
Oh, okay, so it is on Anderson's. Okay, Rex Bridge is two seventy-six or so. Okay, so they are both.
A little bit of a loose zone in here. And they've come down as far as Fairbri, as far as, right, we joked around one time about who's doing whose patients. Those are people that have, they don't really care.
The same ambulance service area, fire service area, but there aren't any evacuations in this. Okay, and and yeah, it's been the name that everybody who lives there has been using for a long time.
My only reservation, I, um, like I said, I just got them mapping out, like I said, the one that's six, I don't want to make it super public, because the trail system that they use, but um, that's, those are the names they use, so I really don't want to change it a whole lot.
No.
And there's not going to be like street signs out there. It's mainly just a a resident name, right?
Yeah, and this is a, I don't think this is our first trail. I think we've named something Trail before now. Definitely did Roads Place, Boulevard's, Lanes, Goldsacks, Trail.
You may want to look at that too, because that, to me, I've, I like that differentiation, so that you know it's specifically a trail that we're naming.
I was trying to pull it up in the, in the code, I just saw something shiny somewhere else. But uh, yeah, we we did change the name of Trail to mean specifically like off-road and with some specialized equipment, you know? Not, no Cadillac.
Right.
This totally fits this. So the rest of these?
I have a question about the, um, a couple questions about the Super Cub Lane. First, I see in the application, I think in the application, they say Super Cub Place. Does that, does that matter? Is there, is there distinguishing between lanes and places?
I believe that's what he picked, but technically according to our code, it's going to end up being lane. Um, that was just his choice. And so we've talked, I've talked to him about that as well, like, he was just more excited about the Super Cub.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Than he was necessarily suffix.
How, so this is a driveway, there's a lot of other driveways that access the Parks Highway. Like, how are those treated now?
I feel like some of them have. That kind of specifies it has to be three or more, three or more properties or three or more uh, structures in in that driveway to be applicable to named.
Okay, so there is like a parameter, you can't just be like.
There is, there is, and this one specifically too is, it's interesting. I I actually had already addressed him off the Parks Highway, and then once he realized that he was applicable for potentially naming his own driveway, it makes sense, because there's, he's got two different structures that he's going to, that he owns, that he would like addressed. His neighbor that signed off on it has one, there's actually another one. Um, and so it will make it easier, I think, for emergency responders to find him, find them in that little cutoff. Goes into that, enough of a driving to.
But every driveway that has one house, quarter mile, eligible, right, right, okay.
Yeah, it has to be, has to be a thousand feet, I think, and it has to have.
Three or three or more.
Although there, I, in my head, I was imagining some more flexibility where if it wasn't close, then we'd look at it, but but not relevant right now. Thoroughfare Road.
Sunset because of the way the layout is of the, um, his subdivision. One of them is on the east and one is on the west, so we thought that was.
It's nice.
And each one, forty lead, so it's cute.
I want to make sure, I'm, I I feel embarrassed to admit this, but uh, is that how we spell thoroughfare?
That's how it's spelled, I don't know if this is intentional, but that's how it's spelled in the park, for like thoroughfare paths.
That would make sense.
So it might be a reference to those geographies, and that is how it's spelled.
Thank you, because I kind of wanted that as well. That does make sense with the clientele in that area, I came up with that.
So I I I shouldn't be embarrassed about that.
And actually, there's double cute points. There's the sunrise and the sunset glacier in the thoroughfare areas. Be creative.
That's right.
That's cool. Tipple Road, Industrial Road. I suppose this, this whereas these streets are within the Tri Valley ambulance coverage area, uh, strictly speaking, the Clear Sky Trail might be up in the Anderson subdivision area. No, I.
Anderson Fire Service Area.
Fire Service, and it's in the south of the Anderson subdivision. Okay. Any further discussion on this resolution? Okay, well then, uh, let's call the vote. We don't need to, we don't all delete, just, what we do need, okay, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Jim Johnston? Uh, yes. Baxter Mercer?
Yes.
Steve Jones?
Yes.
Susan Brown? Yes. Williams Ward?
Yes.
Anathmus.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, good work. That brings us to public comments. We do have Assembly Member Alexander and uh, Ms. Breeze on the line still. Any public comments at this point? Oh, I suppose we have James Zach had on too. They're confused there, I thought that was my eye back. I don't have anything. Public comments, going once, going twice.
I'm happy to provide you um, more information and contacts um, regarding what I shared tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye. Good night.
Then uh, Commissioner comments. Start with Ms. Brown.
This meeting, lots of interesting things going on. Yeah, I just, there's so much money, it just bottles my money that it would cost that much money to get roads in, but it's where things are. Anyway, it'll be interesting to see how it comes out as we continue to work on it.
Yeah, um, yeah, uh, building off of what Susan just said, I think it's, I think someone here mentions, I think it's really fortuitous from Minnesota. Helping us out at the same time that we're thinking about getting the Ligny subdivision off the ground, and I think that that could be a really great timing, if if in all their assessments and analyses, it turns out that focusing our efforts on Ligny subdivision over other efforts that we might do, makes sense. Yeah, I'm excited, hopeful that they will be able to give us a lot of help gathering funds and making it successful and a reality. So good, good work on the borough to um, kicking off that partnership.
Yeah, I'll say that too. Good work to the borough, to the mayor, to the staff, that's uh, you guys are doing an impressive volume of work on just our stuff, and then I'll tune into an assembly meeting or LEPC meeting you all had here yesterday, I guess I was overhearing some people talk about that, and there's a lot going on there, and it's uh, it's impressive, and I I feel pretty fortunate to have a small partner in this corner of it. They're hoping to find six point four million dollars to make this happen.
I mean, Steve's pretty well on the right idea, trying to, of contractor or something to start off and do some of the stuff. It's something, although I think we're having a pretty hard time selling much of this. Lots of people I've talked to, this is, it's not quite what, like, to the definitely not what they would be expecting. I can only think of one of them, probably off the top of my head, who's still be interested. Maybe, yes, the husband, some way out there, following this forward.
Just felt a quarter ago, be nice.
But, I exchange, I remember.
Taking the time to change, as boroughs in a very definite transition period right now. It's not the same borough that we were in thirty years ago.
It's not the same borough that we were in thirty years ago.
That's for sure.
And we have to learn to adapt that to it. I'm still against. Anything other than forward funding and and home rule of status, but. We can learn to adapt. Or, and I think that the borough staff, the present borough staff is doing a remark, so. Okay, uh, planning commission report to the assembly, uh, the next meeting is December third. It's a week earlier than usual, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and this is, this is maybe a good place to just. We're we're meeting about every two months at this point, and so we've been in the habit recently of, uh. Kind of the mayor and staff share any updates from our group that affects the assembly, I think you guys have a more consistent presence with the assembly. And, um, certainly appreciate you bringing remarks back to us from them, uh. Are we still interested in trying to assign planning commissioners to attend the meetings, which is. It's it's good practice, it certainly never hurts anything to have more more folks there. I don't think it hurts to ask if somebody wants to go.
My wife might think something differently, a rural plan.
Is that right there, I hear that's the, uh. Hotluck meeting, that's. Am I just making that up?
We always serve food.
He's not getting the memo.
Well, so, you know, when you go, uh. Time and place of our next meeting is Wednesday, July, January twenty first, two thousand twenty six, six P M, right here in the General Borough Office. Last call for this meeting.
What, one thing I'll say, the December meeting is pushed up because of the Alaska Municipal League Annual Conference, and so commissioners, you are all. More than welcome, invited, and you have a travel budget to attend, should you wish to go to the Alaska Municipal League Annual Conference.
Can you tell us more about that?
I can, um, I would direct you to their website for the full agenda, but the conference starts. Geez, I'm gonna, I probably shouldn't even speculate, but it's. The Wednesday, Thursday is the two main conferences, I think Tuesday would be the Alaska Conference of Mayors, Alaska Municipal Managers. Uh, the Alaska Government, is it two, Wednesday, Thursday?
Yeah, so it's December tenth and eleven, but there would be a newly elected officials training, I believe that would be on Monday the eighth. Um, if anyone wanted to attend.
So if you look up Municipal League and look at the annual conference agenda and any portion of the week. Um, is appealing and you have availability, we'd love, I'd love to chat with you about making travel arrangements, Ruby's, um, administrative. Or Ruby is out, so we'll, we'll just figure it out and help you get signed up. Get a hotel and all that kind of thing, so, and this is down in Anchorage?
It's down in Anchorage, it's.
The block was at the Marriott, I believe it's at the Denina Center. So, um, we're we're putting together a presentation on street addressing, um, to share the, um. Community. In rural, uh, Western Alaska community, we're gonna co-present with them and a contractor who specializes in addressing, and so. I'm gonna take some notes from our journey through the addressing world, um, down, and that's on Thursday, present an hour and a half.
I see a hand by, uh, Assembly Member Alexander. Check one two, we hear, we see your microphone is off, like you're, if you wanna talk, uh, we can't hear you. Sorry for. No, that's, that's, uh. Honestly, I had looked it up after the assembly meeting, I thought it was in February. And I was looking at it like, oh yeah, I can't do those specific dates in a way, but, uh, this is a different set of dates, which I'll have to. Conflict with for a different reason.
Baby can hear me now. Thank you, sorry, I had my headphones on, I just wanted to say, um, uh. To anybody that I took the, um, newly elected officials training online back it was COVID times. But I would recommend, uh, anybody to go down there and take that, I I found it very helpful. So, think about it. And great meeting and thanks for all the work you guys are doing. That's it.
Thank you. All right, any last go-bags before adjourned? All right, we will adjourn at seven fifty seven P M, thank you. Did you watch, uh, which community in Western Alaska?